Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, and welcome to Scottsburg's Council on April the 26th, 2024, the year of our Lord. We're calling our meeting together now, and we begin by prayer and pledge allegiance. So we all will pray, let's stand, have prayer, say the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll... Father, we come before you this day. It's been a day of joy for many, it's been a day of hurt for many. For many have been born and many have died. So Father, we just praise you and thank you for the day you've given to us, this pilgrimage of life. And that's what it is, Father. We're thankful for each day. Forgive us for taking them for granted. Father, let us enjoy each day to its fullest. We thank for Scottsburg, Indiana, and those that reside here. We thank for the opportunity to serve these folks, Father. We pray for wisdom, for discernment, for understanding, and for ideas, Father, from our council and from our citizens, Father. Thank you for this time we have. Thank you, Father, that today we begin Passover, and we just enjoy ourselves to you, Father, to be thankful for the Passover that we experience. And so we praise you and thank you. Be with us this evening, just then we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing on our genus evening is a roll call by clerk, treasurer, Jan Hardy.
Mary Amy.
Here.
Ted Hall.
Here.
Rick Cosar.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Mark Nicholson.
Here.
Thank goodness. Ms. Hardy, next thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes on the April 1st, 2024 meeting. If you've had time to read through those, will accept the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I make the motion to accept the minutes.
Rick makes the motion to accept the minutes as they're set.
I'll second.
Mark Nicholson, seconds. Questions, comments? Hear none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, you there?
Yes, aye.
Okay, cut. All right. Okay, unanimous, thank you very much. We'll go now to our public comment, Terry. The city of Scottsburg will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we have to come forward and state your name for the record. Each person will have three minutes to voice their opinion or remarks, should focus on issues, and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Do we have anyone in the sitting who would like to come forward? Anyone in the sitting who would like to come forward? Going once, going twice, open sessions closed. Next, we'll go to our new business, and this is the advisory plan, commission, fee schedule by Carmen Bowman. Terms he'll present this to council, please.
Okay. Hey, everyone. I think I sent all of this to you in an email last week, so I know I have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'll try to keep you moving and not take up too much of your time. So if you look at it, our first, our current fee schedule looks kind of dated and funky, or multiple columns going on. And it was brought over to the city whenever this department came here in 2018, and it has not been updated since then. So what you see before you is an updated fee schedule that Chandler Seabrook Williams Design Group put together for us whenever they also redid our comp plan, our zoning and subdivision ordinances. This is updated, it covers any kind of permit we can feed. There were some permits we were missing. This kind of gives us more specific options. Some prices went down, like a demolition permit, but other than that, most of them are slightly increased just to match the communities around us and try to cover some more of our costs with any administrative tasks, and it also covers the cost of any inspection for various permits. So do you guys have any questions on that?
Your council has no questions. We will go forward and ask for a motion to pass as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Hardy makes a motion to pass it presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick, does everybody have a second? Any questions, comments about this? Hear none, all papers. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next thing on our genus evening is reading of orders number 2024-24, orders of many of the zoning maps of United Development Orders now in effect for the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. This is PC-1-24, they may run rezone. They have a motion to pass this on first reading.
I'll second.
Mark Nicholson makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick, does our second? Any questions, comments?
So rezone only needs one, one reefer.
All in favor, say aye?
So you mean deny to be the only reefer?
Correct, on a rezone.
So go again. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What Kevin did.
Kevin, we didn't hear you.
I oppose, as per three.
Three ten.
I have, just for the record, Kevin and Tim, so Kevin and Tim, in three two. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go to orders 2024-4. This is an order to submit the zoning maps of United Development Orders now in effect on the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, on the PC-2-24, Bowman slash Howie 36 slash Campbell Mill rezone. They have a motion to go forward on this.
I'll make the motion, though.
Kevin makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian, seconds. Questions, comments? Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I said, we have got a lot of questions, but we don't have time tonight to go through all this. Is the only thing I have, well, Terry, but it's fine, yes. You know what you do, so.
Oh, we have questions. Certainly, we should.
That's what I'm here for, if you have any. I can try to answer anything you have. If not, all of the projects.
We don't all do it. All the projects. Well, I just, I just haven't had a chance to go through all this. I just got, you know, I just printed it off today, primarily. And so, I don't...I just don't understand what all, there's apartments and commercial to go with this? Is that how that's working? Is that the one we're talking about, where they want to put apartments behind that area? Is all this going to be commercial?
I think we're on the, we're on the second one. So this is...
The Bowman Road.
Yeah, this is on the Bowman Road. So all of that would be an industrial complex. But it's only, they're only asking to rezonate to light industrial, so there couldn't be anything that emits fumes or sounds. It would have to be like a shipping warehouse or something.
Right. Okay. That's my, that's my main concern, was I thought that was all going to be tied in with background, with temple and...
Those are two different locations.
PC and Hauser. Okay. All right. That's, that's my...
The one you're thinking of is behind John Jones and Goodwill, so it's a little separated.
That's separated.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's my main concern on that. I knew that there was something going on there, but I didn't know what, like I said, I haven't had a chance to look at all this.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Do you have any other questions? I can try to...
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
Kevin, do you have questions?
No, I'm good on that one.
We make the motion.
Okay, okay. Anybody other questions? Okay, we've got, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next we're going to go to is our reading of orders 2024-5, orders submitting the zoning maps of United Development Orders now in effect on the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, on PC-3-24, Bellevue slash Lake Road rezoned. Talk to us about that.
Okay, so this is asking you all to rezonate land from R1 and R2, which means sink or low-density housing, de-density housing, to high-density housing. And this is for what's commonly known as the young apartments on Lake Road, and then some of the land behind it. It's a field right now. And this does two things. It may, in one, it brings the young apartments into compliance with our zoning ordinance. Right now, they're called legal non-conforming, so they're not illegal, but they also don't conform to our zoning ordinance. So this would fix that, and it would also give Ralph Inc., who's also here to present, if they're interested, or you guys are interested, the ability to build triplexes. That was the only condition to this, is that they can't build a huge apartment facility. They can't build anything but certain of the triplex on this land. So it gives us the ability to do that. And Kelly, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add or about Ralph, but this is, this project came before the previous council at a different location, and I think this location is probably a better fit, so.
I have a question.
There's an ingress address off of Bellevue. Is there an ingress address off of Lake as well?
No, right now, the only ingress address is off of Bellevue. In the future, they will look at possibly adding more, like, right, Kelly?
Okay. Let's get a motion to go forward with this, PC-3-24. We will ask for a second, and then we'll take any questions with that. So...
Did I miss the motion?
No, I'm saying, I'm asking for now a motion for PC-3-24, Bellevue, Lake Road rezone. We have a motion for this.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Hardy makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rick, does our second? Now let's ask questions, whatever questions you have on this budget.
What kind of housing this is going to be? I mean, it is...
Duplexes and triplexes. Right now, we're planning a phase one of 10 units.
And, and...
Single-story, accessible and affordable for Scottsburg residents.
So we're talking like Section 8 housing?
Not Section 8 housing.
Not Section 8.
Very explicitly not Section 8 housing. This is just housing that is affordable to Scottsburg residents, to people who are working in the warehouse off Bowman Road, for example.
Your residents have to show proof of income, right, Kelly?
They do have to show proof of income. They have to pass a background check and a credit check. They have to have a certain amount of income, but not too much income. And they have to follow all the rules and regulations. We are onsite managers and onsite maintenance. We own and manage the property. We don't plan to sell it, and we also don't plan to build high-rise or multi-story, highly dense housing. We had to go with R3 because it allowed triplexes. The only thing that R2 allows is duplexes, and we wanted to build at least one, if not two, triplexes. But we have no plans to build anything more dense than that. And that's a condition, and the reason the plan commissions that you all with a favorable recommendation is that, the condition is they can't only do triplexes. They can't do anything that R3 would allow further than that.
In your corporate study, did you find that Scottsburg needed housing?
Yes. The Scott County as a whole, in 2019, could use 2,000 more units of housing.
Two thousand.
In 2019. So we know anecdotally that it's probably only gotten worse since then. Fifty-five percent of Scottsburg residents are renters, and of those 55%, 33% I believe, are cost burdened, which means that they are paying more than 30% of their income in their housing expenses, and this would help alleviate that even ever so little. Also, I believe it's 39% of Scottsburg residents have a disability, and Ruff is a human service and disability service organization that builds explicitly accessible housing. So that is accessible for your mom who uses a walker and can't do stairs, accessible for your neighbor who uses a wheelchair, accessible for someone who might need a grab bar in their shower later on. We really pride ourselves on building accessible, affordable housing.
Where do you have some of this housing at now, do you?
Charlestown, right now.
Charlestown?
Mm-hmm. We also have a partnership and an alliance with Blue River Services that has housing out Salem, Palmyra, Corden, what am I forgetting? New Salisbury, out that way. And they also build similar style and similar accessibility housing that we are looking to build.
And we have operated this housing, I used to be the housing director for Blue River Services, and now I'm working with Kelly at Ruff. But we have operated this housing for the last 20 years, and it is not Section 8 housing. It's housing, when we build it, we do get some grants that helps to build it, but there's no ongoing subsidy. But we also have to get a mortgage loan, just like anybody else would have to do that. And, you know, we very much manage and own our own properties and take very great pride in them, and, and so we want it to be a nice development, you know. If any of you would like to come out and see any of our properties, we'd be glad to show up to you.
Where is that one in Charlestown?
That's in Hawthorne Glen subdivision. We built accessible, single-family homes. We own and manage 18 of them on one street, and we fit in well with the neighborhood of house down the street just sold for half a million dollars.
Just a second. Chris, did I, did I hear you say that you have other properties in these other cities as well, or this is your only property in Charlestown?
So this is Ralph's only property. Ralph also has a property, or also has a partnership and alliance with Blue River Services that owns more than 400...
200.
200, 220 units of housing in, out west of us, a little bit more, Salem, Palmyra, New Salisbury, Corden.
Similar-sized communities.
Yes, also similar-sized communities.
So this isn't your first Ruff?
No.
That's through the Green River, though.
Blue River.
Blue River.
But Blue River and Ralph have a partnership, and while the legal ownership structure is different, this is Paula Craig. She's the former housing director who built the majority of those 200 units, and she's a consultant of this project, and consulted with us in general.
Tim, we had a plot, I believe it was last year, two years ago, at the Old Bank property on 31 North. We were looking at purchasing that a few years ago. I think this is a much better location for what they're talking about, as opposed to the 31 North location we had.
Why does that make it such a much better place?
I think there was a lot of issues with traffic and concerns on 31 North, and that, how the, if I remember correctly from when we were talking about it, how the properties itself backed up, with the back of the green yards facing 31 North. There were some issues with fencing and triplexes and some other stuff there, but this obviously is a little bit more secluded environment off of Bellevue.
And we do hope to build, ultimately, we have thoughts, not solid plans, but thoughts to build 32 units on 5.8 acres, which is a density of a little more than six units per acre, well under what your guidance allows. And we also plan to build a community space, a community building, and a park.
What other questions, what other questions does the council have, please? Hear none, do I, we have a motion to pass PC-3-24, Bellevue slash Lake Road rezone?
I'll make the motion.
More in favor of this?
I'm sorry, we have, sorry about that. So we're ready to vote. Sorry about that.
I think...
We didn't, I said, we're going to ask questions after a second. We've already done, I've already done that.
Christian Evans making motion.
Yeah, Christian Evans.
Seconded by Rick Cosar.
Okay, so let's, let's, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going down now to 2024-R-1, a resolution. The city of Scottsburg authorized participation in the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing agreement brought to you by the Wonder Woman, Josh. Thank you.
So this is just to allow us to participate in this program. It doesn't require us to participate. It doesn't require us to purpose anything at all. This is a nationwide cooperative that is allowed in our Canadian code. This entity basically submits out lots of RFPs each year for all kinds of materials and equipment, and they get nationwide bids back. Obviously, one of the interests to us right now is trash trucks. So they did one last year. I think they got, I don't remember the exact number, 15 responses, and then they score them. You can see all of the responses and the pricing. And if we adopt this resolution, we can basically tap into their RFP process and their pricing and move a little quicker and efficiently on our purchases.
What question do you have? Or sort of about Sourcewell, anything else? Kevin, you have any questions, everybody?
Yeah, maybe. I haven't got, let me see, I'm looking for Sourcewell. Yeah, explain some more, Josh, about this process, if you would. If you can, I mean, exactly what is it? It doesn't, it's not going to cost anybody anything at present time?
It doesn't cost us anything to participate in the program, no.
Okay.
Sourcewell nationwide, Tim, the way I understand it, has already given bids for the lowest bidder nationwide over fire trucks and different types of equipment and inventory.
Absolutely. You can go to their website. I mean, it's toilet paper to dump trucks. I mean, it's anything and everything in between. Each one of those processes, we have to go through. We have to advertise, we have to publish, there's legal fees and publication costs. All that adds up. They basically have already done that work for us. We can still decide to go do our own if we want, but we can at least see what's out there, and when a nationwide search was basically conducted, see what's responding. So, you know, again, there's fire trucks, police cars, you know. There's not too many entities that make those things. So you can basically see what the best nationwide pricing is by tapping into this. And then they have local dealers that are registered through that website that you can connect with, and then they have, they honor the price that Sourcewell has negotiated.
And the city's very, very conscious of seeing what Sourcewells are, and then we also, we also look to see what we can buy out of other areas. So when we come to you, we're going to come to you, and here's what, we found it over here, and this is what we found here, and here's what Sourcewell is, and which one do you want to go with. So we treat, we treat the people's money just like our own. We're very concerned. So, good questions. Kevin, what questions do you have?
I don't have any questions. It sounds good to me.
Okay. I'm not picking, I just want to make sure you're part of it, brother. And...
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions before we take a motion? Okay, hear none. We would like to bring before you 2024-R-1 resolution on the Sourcewell, and we have a motion to go forward.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have three seconds. I'm going to leave it to Jan Hardy to make the, make the decision. Any other questions? Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. You got that aye in there just in time, just in time. Next, we have reading on orders number 24, 2024-6, an order submitting the tap fee collected by Scottsburg Department of Water Works addressing water issues. We have a motion to pass this on first reading.
I'll make the motion.
Does our next motion to pass this on first reading, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Kevin, a second? Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear you, Kev.
Aye.
Aye, all in. Aye on going forward?
Absolutely.
Okay. Opposed? Pass unanimously.
We will have a public hearing, and this will come back on second, third reading at the next, at the end of May.
So next, we have, first reading, orders 2024-7, orders establishing policy and procedure for sewer billing adjustments. We have a motion to pass this on first reading.
I'll make the motion.
Mark makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Tim, seconds that. Any questions, comments about this? Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Again, this is only first reading, second reading. Next round as well.
Tell it to you guys on this one. I got responses. I got edits back from the utility department. I may notice I sent those out earlier today. I think it's pretty much a final order. This, this board works, so on the adjustments, the form has to be submitted to the board works. Board works for the utility directors. She has discretion up to 1,000. Okay. So, but she always has the discretion of, you know, she always has the discretion to bring the board works.
So I'm assuming, Jan, you might be able to help. This is in response to, I know we had an issue last year where there was a sewer adjustment that needed, there was a water leak.
Yes, I think...
Yeah, someone that had missed it.
Yeah, so we can do them. We're kind of needing a little clarification.
Yeah, it's a work out. You can go, you just need to have a specific policy. So...
Because I remember they had to go to the board works, and there wasn't a procedure. It was just ask for the adjustment.
And we have some that have asked several times when you're...
Right.
And then we have some that will identify, hey, I have leak, but there's no proof that the leak's been fixed.
Okay.
Which obviously, if someone has a leak, that happens, but sets the formal policy. What we are expecting to then adjust that leak is, there's a water leak, it's not running through the sewer period, so we're going to adjust it. But it sets forth that process. We're going to abide the apple, if you will, each year. One of the big things that the utility department does go with when we address was pole fills, so specifically on the farm. Those are theories you have on one season, so we would have that on there as well.
Along with what Josh said, Christian, that when I was at that conference in January, they say as long as we have an approved policy. This was on something else that I had asked them. So to just get clear SLP says, I know what they're working on back there.
Makes sense. I have no problem making motions, suspending the rules, and pass second, third reading, tie it on.
We have a motion by Christian Evans to sup, to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick, does there a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We will now accept the motion to pass on second and third readings. This is orders 2024-7, for sewer bill adjustments. Do we have a motion to pass on second and third reading?
I'll make the motion.
Mark, if it makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Christian Evans, seconds. Any questions? Hear none, all papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Orders 2024-7 passes on all three readings. We're now down to orders 2024-R-2, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals concerning the city's municipal broadband assets and matters related thereto. Josh, this is...
Yeah, absolutely. So the city has its own broadband municipal property and company with assets. There it's a, then a process of building out some of the fiber and phases. It's not exactly a quick or a cheap scenario, and it's not like a lot of our other utilities, obviously, with water and water and things where we're the only player in town. So this is a growing area of competition within the city. So at this point, this resolution would authorize us to release a request or proposal. this point, this resolution would authorize us to release a request or proposal, we're basically looking for responses two different ways, whether or not there's any, um, basically possible asset purchaser, that will look to purchase those assets, or, um, is there someone that would look to partner with us in the maintenance facility, running of the facilities, the growth of those, um, that, that infrastructure. So, this is not committing us to anything, it's basically, before we were, you know, there'd been a lot of discussion of growing that entity, and this is part of, I think, of our due diligence, before we would take any further steps in that market, that we would look and see where we're at, what type of assets, and what the value of those assets are, and then make some, um, determinations for, when we, when we see what the open market tells us it's worth. So, that's all this is doing, is authorizing a release of that RFP, we expect that, I, my expectation is that there'll at least be a thirty day window for responses, and we've even talked about that possibly being a forty-five day window, so at this point in time, the next timeframe is probably sometime in early June, that we would be looking at, um, having some type of solid response on those RFPs, and have some type of scoring back to the council on, um, recommendations thereon. Any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, turn this over.
Here you go, questions, questions, we'll ask for a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash two.
I'm making a motion.
If there's a makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark mentioned seconds, any questions, comments? Hearing that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can answer, motion twenty twenty-four dash R dash two passes on all.
Just, it's just a resolution.
Just a resolution, yeah, just a resolution. Uh, the next thing I did, it is a change of May twenty-seventh meeting, but that's on Memorial Day. What's your pleasure, Mr. President?
Obviously, the council, um, I know in years past, when we had holiday conflicts, we either set a date already, or, um, obviously discussed a date at the meeting, or we waited to see if there were enough agenda items to host the meeting, so, we can, you know, give it a week or two, um, to see what, obviously, we can address the next, I think we have a meeting in May, right, May tenth, I believe, or thirteenth, whatever the date is, um, because of course, if you don't have much on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, then, um, there isn't really a need necessarily to postpone it, or we can go ahead and set a date either way, so, this, from the last time, last four years on council, that's what we've historically done, so.
This looks like May thirteenth, our first meeting on, uh.
Correct.
May, on the twenty-seventh, this is Memorial Day.
Correct. So we can, we can set a date, if we want to do the twenty-eighth, or we can have the May meeting, and then wait and see if there are not agenda items to have the second meeting in May or not, that's, obviously, you all can say.
I have no problem with that.
Which one?
We need to advertise, though, for that part, and we can't wait until Jane, like, choose.
Absolutely.
Choose not to have.
Either way.
Well, we can change the meeting date, and then if we have something we have to do, we can go ahead and, and just cancel while we're getting it.
Either way's fine, we can do the next day, the May twenty-eighth, or we can just play it by ear and see if we have agenda that needs.
I think it'd be better if we just played it by ear, and kind of see, you know, what we have, anything we need to take care of.
Tim, do you have preference either way?
No.
Kevin, what's your say, buddy?
Uh, we can, uh, we can wait, we can move to the twenty-eighth, and then, uh, we have a meeting.
Let's just do this, because I know we've done it in the past, let's set a tentative date to twenty-eighth, and then obviously, if the May thirteenth meeting, you know, whatever's finished, and we don't need to meet on the twenty-eighth, we can, we can play it by ear, let's just go ahead and pencil in May twenty-eighth, just as a tentative date.
Sounds good, sounds good. What an announcement do we have for this, for this evening? We had a great announcement a few weeks ago by our councilman, Christian Evans, that the city of Scottsburg, uh, Scottsburg is one state, and now we, I got a call from Bobby Ashley at the JAG, the National, National Careers Association, uh, JAG National Career Development, that was held in Saint Louis, Missouri, uh, Scottsburg came in first in the nation, and, uh, is this not a name? We had, we had, uh, three students out there, Alicia Alcorn, Natasha Williams, and Connor Bartos, so, for a while for them, we want to announce this, but we are going to have, uh, a recognition, have them come before council, and, uh, have a picture made with council, and it will put in the papers, so people can see how, you know, Scottsburg's come in on this as well, so this is fantastic, the ball team's going to come as well, I think, and we're going to set those dates as well, so, uh, just, uh, if you see these kids, or see Bobby, you know, give them a good pat on the back, and they have water, they have a growth. Further, further announcements? Okay, hearing that, we have a motion, make a charge. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Jane, do I need this side?
Yes, I'll bring, I'll bring it, thank you. That was lovely, yeah.
Point of view, you all right?